Good morning, welcome to the January 22nd, 2013, meeting of the selectmen over here at Town Hall. We've got a pretty light agenda today, hopefully, so we'll get right into it. First thing is, I believe, we may have a new police officer on the force, so Tom Osley, the chief, if you could come up here with the new officer and just introduce her.
I'd like to introduce our newest hire, which will be Tiffany McDougall. She will be going through the same field training officer program as the other two officers. Actually, she graduated in the same reserve intermittent class, academy classes, Jake Lepine and John Holmes. So she'll be starting as soon as she gets sworn in by Louise, doing the training with Lieutenant DeKoschak, and we will work our way through the three-month process doing that.
Okay. Do you have anything to say?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
All right. Next up is any public announcements from you on you or you? No? Okay. Anybody here for a community forum? All right. There are no minutes that I saw, so we can go into posted business, and the ongoing CNS truck issue is gonna be on our agenda, I think, until we get some things solved in there. So I did notice one of the things we can discuss today is, we were presented with a number of names in the neighborhood of Plain Road, and basically what they're asking for is a street light on a corner of Circle Drive and Plain Road, and I believe that light was there at one time but removed several years ago.
Correct.
So what they're saying is that between the trailer trucks going in there and trying to turn around in the middle of the night, and they're usually late at night, they would like a street light there to actually probably identify the trucks a little bit better, so they can report them when they're backing over driveways or in, over lawns and destroying the neighborhood. So, gentlemen, what you're feeling about it?
We asked DPW and Chief of Police to get together and to rack and stack that against the other requirements and to come back with a recommendation.
And we did that. We took a ride up there and took a look at the area, and, you know, obviously there was, you could see where trucks had turned around on people's property. So our recommendation is to replace the light, put it back up, turn it back on in that area.
I move that we install a light on Circle Drive, on a corner of Circle Drive and...
Plain Road. Okay, motion made, second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Before we move off, we had a discussion yet with District Two, DOT, regarding signage.
I'm setting up a meeting within the next couple of weeks. They're pretty busy over there, but I'm going to meet with them. I told them what we have, and they said, "Come down. We'll meet right at the headquarters down there," so...
Yeah, but a couple of weeks, I mean...
Well, we can't put the signs up yet anyways. We're not gonna be able to put them in the ground now anyway, so...
Well, you can drill them in the ground.
At a more cost.
Now, the thing is, at what cost do we, you know, I mean, $1,000 for a bridge abutment?
Correct.
At what cost is...
Well, I mean, let me go down there and talk to them. They know that I'm coming, so...
I'd like to get them in this week, next week, this next week, if that's possible.
Yeah, the sooner, the sooner the better, so...
Yeah, I don't think we should try to wait two weeks. It's been four weeks, three, four weeks since we started this thing.
The other thing that I did notice, I think I brought it up, is if you go down Route Five, West Street, and you look over to the entrance of CNS, it's totally dark. I mean, totally dark, other than one little street light right at the intersection of Plain Road and Route Five. I don't know if we could talk to CNS to see if they'd maybe be willing to put in a couple of lights along that route.
On the roadway?
You know, I mean, they have a light now that shines directly down, so we wouldn't be interfering with the neighborhood, because I know probably the neighborhood wouldn't like it as lit up as their parking lot is. I mean, you can see that, you know, from quite a distance, so... But I'm thinking, I know now they have even these LED lighting that basically shine right down, and so a trucker coming off of 91 may actually see an entrance there.
Like a spotlight type thing?
Yeah, they just basically shine down on the roadway. They don't, you know, shine out.
But you'd wanna shine it on the intersection going into Plain Road area.
Right, well, there is, there is one street light there, but it's, I mean, that's it. That's, you don't see anything beyond that light, so...
Why don't we work with, why doesn't he work with the electric company to see if they have a different type of lighting that would light up that intersection, that sign? You know, I mean, they've got many different types of lightings and shields and stuff.
I mean, you know, now they even have the solar-powered ones that, they last 12 hours, you know?
Well, I have a conversation about the Circle Drive light. I'll ask them.
All right.
Because there's existing poles on that street, correct?
No, there is no, there's only one pole. The rest is all underground, and there's no secondary voltage going through there. So they'd have to trench, so that's why I'm kinda suggesting going with one of these solar lights.
Okay.
And I do know they have them out there, so... All right, is there anything else on that?
No, but the session with DOT is important, because that then triggers us to get back to CNS, who's already volunteered to create the signs and pay for the signs, so we're gonna need to get the approval, the siding, the number, the design standards, and get that to CNS, so we can move forward.
Right. Okay.
And I guess if they don't, if they don't jump on it and they don't take care of it, then we're gonna have to do something else and go, who's gonna take care of it?
Well, I've talked to two of the folks at CNS, excuse me, at DOT. Both of, the individuals that'll handle this, and they're receptive. They understand there's an issue, and they're expecting us to come forward with a proposal.
All right, but not two weeks, I mean...
No, 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 I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about DOT staff who handles this is ready to receive what our request is.
All right.
I don't know what the answers will be, but...
All right. Next, we have the Highway Garage Break Room.
That's not there by mistake.
Okay. So much for that. Okay, next we have the Community Projects Summary.
That's the Capitol Program Project Summary, and I just thought it'd be appropriate to let folks know kind of where we are. This remains a work in progress. We're trying to finish up this month. We've got a couple of loose ends, but I thought we'd review what's on the plate for fiscal year '14. Again, it remains a work in progress. We haven't identified all the funding sources as yet, but at the moment, I'll just quickly go down some of the items that are on the table. A laptop for the police department vehicles, and that's now gonna be covered down by a grant. Bob Wagner was here earlier talking about using CPA funds to support augmentation of the state support for agricultural preservation restrictions, and so there's a matching fund proposal on the table here. We have a couple of things with respect to DPW Highway Garage, the roof fencing, which we'd already asked for some time ago, and we talked about that clean room at the, at the Highway Garage. Some sidewalk repair, Main, Chester, and North Street, and we've had a couple sessions with Representative Kokot. He's put that into Transportation Bond Bill. Whether it gets appropriated or not, but we don't know, but anyway, it's, it's in there, and that's tentatively the proposed source of funding. We have some roadwork on Upper Main toward the, northerly toward the Whately Line, Mill and Plain, on Plain Road, resurfacing Straits Road, portion of, resurfacing South and Valley Streets, sections of Prospect Street. Colonial Lakers, INI infiltration, inflow, relining there, the sewer. This has been an ongoing issue for some years. It impacts the capacity of our sewer plant, handling non-sewage materials. It also potentially can impact our licenses, since we're under an overall reduction mandate to reduce our INI. Ongoing replacements and upgrades that DPW's been working at our water and sewer activities, meter replacements, various electrical upgrades, computer upgrades at the wastewater plant and pump stations. We need another, this is the third RBC rotating biological contactor. We did part of the work on the, at the reservoir for the tank mixer. We still have another portion of that work to be done. That's scheduled for this year, subject to funding. In terms of vehicle, we're talking about one police cruiser to replace a Crown Vic, track loader for DPW, and a council on aging van, and we procure those under a lease, five-year lease. We have...
Jeff, can I hold you for a second there? On the council on aging van, I know there was a problem with the headroom on the new van that we just got. Is that going to the school? I don't see that on the school's thing.
School is going to outsource their van operation.
So what are we gonna do with that van that we got that doesn't have enough headroom in it?
No, that's the DPW, excuse me, this is a COA van we're talking about, not a school van.
Yeah, but I know what the director said is that she, maybe there's a possibility of switching, but, you know, they're not gonna go, they're not gonna need a van, okay? And then they would get a new one. Is that replacing that one, or I'm not sure what's going on?
This is replacing the one that, the plate is about, about the low headroom.
But that's the newest one we just got last year, two years, last year.
Yes. This is to replace, not that one, the oldest one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay. I guess...
Okay, so there's an issue regarding the school van?
No.
There's an issue with the new COA van with the headroom inside.
Yeah, to have the right specs.
Correct.
Going forward, is that what you're...
Right, but I guess, well, I guess now's a good time to talk about that. If there was, when we leased that one, this is the one that doesn't have the proper headroom, when we leased that one, are the specs, were we right with the specs when we asked for that? Because I know she gave the specs to, to the mechanic, and he ordered it accordingly. So my question is, were the specs right, or were they wrong when it was ordered? Because that makes all the difference. If there were, if we went in with the specs that were right, and they came in with something with a lower headroom, then they gotta take that back and fix it.
Correct.
Okay, that's not our problem.
That's something we'll look into then, because I don't know what the specs exact.
We need to take care of that like now, because of the situation. And the new van that comes in, we gotta be very careful to make sure that it comes in at that, with the proper headroom and everything at that time, so...
I'll check into that, though, as far as the specs.
Yeah, because as far as the specs, if the specs are right on, and Mark ordered it just according to the specs, then whoever, you know, did the leasing of it down there, they brought it, they sent it in wrong.
Right.
I mean, Jeff gotta put his head through the roof in order to sit in there.
Well, he's not ready for this.
Well, there's some other ones, okay, that's, you know, they just can't fit in a van.
Well, take your point. So DPW gotta actually review the specs on moving forward. Of course, we gotta get it funded first, but...
Well, on both of them. We've got the old one that he's gotta take care of, and then the new one that's coming in.
Some other items looking at for fiscal year '14. Design and plan for park area here adjacent to the Town Hall, and we're looking to CPA to fund that, and Open Space folks and others are working on that one. The Town Hall renovation, we have partial funding for the Town Hall renovation. We're coming forward with a much-scale-down overall proposal than what was proposed last year, actually kind of bare bones. There's still an issue, and we'll talk about that later, as to exact scope and cost of that, and then there's been some work done over the past week that'll help shape what that is. Town Hall garage, looking to use free cash to finish that project off, and that'll provide not only vehicle storage, but office space for all our emergency services activity, co-located fire service, fire and police and ambulance, as well as a common area to be used for training and conference area and meetings by others. We're also looking to CPA to finish off the window project here at Town Hall. I want to point out, the school has a variety of infrastructure and technology upgrades planned, and they're covering them, covering them all within their own budget, and not asking the town for anything. It's all coming out of school choice. Some tech upgrades, ceiling tiles and vents, security system, which they're getting a grant for, some athletic field improvements, beginning a project phased over a three- or four-year period to work on fields. Those are some of the things coming up. Again, we're not final. We have some issues about sources of funding, and we're working with both the board, of course, which will finally approve if it goes forward, and with the Finance Committee. That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we have the Town Hall office hours.
In your packet, and I also sent to you by email last week, or within the last week or so, a chart showing all the offices in Town Hall and what their current office hours are. It struck me shortly after I started working here, you know, how rather erratic the various office hours are. I'm kinda working in a, used to working in an environment where pretty much every, all the offices are pretty much open, you know, at the same time. In a small town, you know, there's various workloads with various numbers of hours allocated per week to work, so you need to be flexible. I believe in, you know, that you need to be flexible, you need to, people have other commitments, you need to be able to accommodate that, though. And looking at this, it just seemed that this is, this should really be tightened up. I don't think it's efficient to have, you know, such a, the office hours, you know, scattered all over the map. I know it's inconvenient for me, when I'm going to try and get some information from another office and nobody's there. So I guess what I'm asking the board for here is to give their blessing to me to try and work on this and try and work out something that will work better for people who actually work at the Town Hall and for the public. Our official Town Hall office hours are 8:30 to 4:30, but as you can see here, you know, there's only a few offices that adhere to that.
I don't think anyone has any objection to trying to work it. Of course, there are a couple of impediments. One, elected officials can determine their own hours, number one. Some of these folks are only part-time, for example, the building inspector, the accountant...
Especially the building inspector, it's very concerning there, because you don't wanna change his hours later, because he deals with a lot of people early in the morning. Contractors come in permitting and stuff like that before they start the day. So in his case, that, you know, that's acceptable practice, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I agree.
And, of course, we're now gonna have an elected treasurer and an elected clerk for separate, which, and they'll decide what hours they choose to work, so...
You know, I mean, secretary of staff...
That's fine.
That should, well, that, they should be, they should be in 8:30, 8 o'clock, 8:30, until, to make sure that one covers the other and stuff like that. You wanna make sure that there's coverage throughout at least 2 o'clock.
The police chief does, in fact, have office hours by appointment on Thursday night and Saturday morning. Showing here is no hours, but...
On who was that, Jeff?
Tom, Chief of Police.
Oh, yeah.
It's Thursday night and Saturday morning. I don't need a motion to have the...
No, I mean, you can look at it and...
Come back with a proposal.
Yeah.
What you feel is the best, and the other thing, keep in mind that it's okay to have hours, but then there's also comp time that people take.
Oh, sure.
So, you know, sometimes they'll take the Friday off of comp time, and they won't be open. If you wanted them to be open, then it'd have, we'd have to get the money to pay somebody to, then we'd defeat our purpose here, so...
You know, this is a small town, we have a lot of part-time people, you need to be flexible, but I think this is beyond flexible.
I mean, like Phil, I mean, Phil could come in at, you know, 7:30, 7, 7:30, well, he's in at 7 to 3 anyway.
All right, yeah, so you can work on that and get back to the small town.
Okay, I'll get back to you.
I'm happy to give it to you.
Okay, 7:30 to 3:30.
Next, we have the Open Space Committee's District Local Technical Assistance application, which...
It's in your packet.
It's right here.
Yeah, I've talked to Peter Cox about all this. This is pretty straight ahead. They're basically applying to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for, excuse me, District Local Technical Assistance Grant to provide staff to help them update the Open Space and Recreation Plan.
Yeah, I moved to approve the request to PVPC for the DLTA assistance with update of the 2008 Highfield Open Space and Recreation Plan.
Second that motion.
Okay, motion made, second, hall in favor?
The other, the other piece to that, though, is that we ought to be thinking about, are there other, are there other initiatives? We're looking for DLTA assistance, District Local Technical Assistance funding. Are there some other ones that...
Well, I know we talked about the bridge over here, the bridge replacement.
No, no, this is, this is study money.
Oh, okay.
This is like assisting with the updates and some of the bylaws, those kinds of things.
Yeah, I think it hits.
So if we have others, I know there's a call out from PVPC for, for requests, so this is one. If we have others, we need to identify them and get them in. Did we vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jan, you just need to sign that.
Done.
I'll submit it to PVPC.
All right. Next, we have the DPW Director. What do you have for us, Phil?
Not too much, though. Like I said, we did take a look at that light, and our recommendation was to move forward to do it, so I'll work with Western Mass Electric. The other thing was the clock issue, the bells.
You need to adjust your budget, because you have a flat amount in there.
Uh, yes.
I don't know what they cost per month, but...
Well, the way the budget, I mean, Paul and I went over the budget last week, and the way it seems to be running, that there's, should be sufficient funds to turn that light on. But the cost to put it up is gonna be a different issue, so we'll have to see what that entails. I don't know what it costs to put the light back on the pole.
Can you, when you're talking to them, can you talk with them and see if they have some kind of a, maybe a new pilot program on new lighting that we might be able to get into? I know years ago, there was a big cost-saving measure, put up new lights. They didn't, they didn't charge us to put new lighting up all the way around town, take care of the ones that they have here and change them, modify them. There might be some kind of a new program coming out.
Yeah, I don't know what they have.
Ask them about it, and maybe we can get the light put up for nothing if they do change.
Another big thing now is installing LED lights.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering, you know...
Well, a couple of years ago...
I know, I know, you'll see them in a lot of cities and towns, not like East Hampton has them, Greifville has some, but those are, those are town, those are city-owned, and basically...
Yeah, so I don't know where...
Well, a couple of years ago, Western Mass came in and did the whole light study and changed everything, looked at every light that we were being charged for, because there was something that were not the right bulbs in there, so they replaced them and adjusted the bills accordingly, so we could have them look at it again, I mean, see if there is a program out there.
I don't know if they have it in there.
Yeah, check with them and see if there is, and maybe it won't cost us anything.
Okay. The clock, we went and got the court order. The court order states the clock is supposed, the bell is supposed to ring from 7 to 9, not till 11. So we adjusted the clock last week, and hopefully it's ringing till 9:00 PM only. If anybody hears it ringing past that, please contact us, because we don't have the years out there at 9:00, 9:00 PM.
Did you resolve the other issue about someone shutting it off or something, or unplugging, and which caused the recycle?
No, no, I did talk to...
Well, at 7:00 in the morning, it's still gonna reset itself and ring 12 times?
At 7:20, correct. At 7:20, it goes off 12 times to reset for the day.
Okay.
That's what happens. So at 7:20, it rings 12 times, but after that, it should only ring to 9:00 PM.
Okay, okay.
And I did have a conversation with Corey Bardwell and asked him to open his ears and see what time it's ringing, because he's been there so long that he said he doesn't even hear it, so... But anyways, that's about all I have.
Anything else?
That's it.
That's it? Good. Okay, Paul, Town Hall renovations.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna talk about the, kind of talk about the Town Hall renovations and the garage renovations, kinda all at once here. You know, the architect and engineers are, you know, moving forward with, you know, our downsized plan to, you know, basically put in some bathrooms on, on the main floor and build out office and meeting space in the back. Yeah, one important thing that, that happened last week is we finally got a flow test done here, and to everyone's surprise, we not only have, we have enough pressure and we have enough volume to support a sprinkler system here at the Town Hall and at the Town Hall Garage, Town Hall Garage. So in terms of what we do here at the Town Hall with the sprinkler system, that still remains up in the air. We will not be required to do it, though at this stage of the game, it is the fire chief's call. Because of the scope of what we're doing here, it doesn't cross that threshold, so we would not be required to do it, but particularly if you, and in terms of the overall cost of putting in a sprinkler system compared to the work that we're doing, it, you know, it's actually, you know, about, it's another $300,000, and we're basically looking at a, you know, a $300,000 project without it. And that's not including the elevator. So that question remains up in the air as far as the Town Hall is concerned.
But, but there's a five-year look.
Right.
And we are gonna do the elevator.
Yep.
So...
Down the road, we can look at that. Right now, we gotta worry about getting the, getting the offices in. That's what we really need to worry about.
That's fine.
Agreed.
That's not what we're talking about. But if you're going, if you're, if you look ahead and, you know, let's not put blinders on here, and we are gonna do some of these other office build-outs, and we are gonna put in the elevator, then you're gonna trigger...
It will eventually trigger it.
You'll trigger the requirement. So you may not put it in right now, but at least you should install whatever, plan for it and include it in the plan, so it could be hooked up later on, so you're not tearing something apart that you just built.
Right. So anyways, that's where we're at with the Town Hall.
Well, we need to close soon on the scope going forward for fiscal year '14 and for town meeting purposes, is to what is it we're asking the town to help us fund? So we can't keep kicking this down the road.
No, no, well, you know, we're getting, we're getting cost estimates.
I thought we had enough money. I thought we had enough money to-
What are we looking for, for offices? I mean, right now, what, what are we planning on a higher build-out, just for offices?
Four offices and a large meeting space, okay?
Well, that's obviously the number one priority.
And part of that is driven by relocation of certain activities because of a plan for an elevator and because of a plan for ADA compliant bathrooms.
Yeah, we would be, uh, you know, with the current plan, we'd, with the complete build-out, we'd be eliminating three existing offices, so we'd have to create uh, three new ones, plus we need a new office uh, for the new dividing clerk, treasurer.
I, I just wanna get the thing going and get it done.
It's going.
It's, it's like, you know, the more we keep screwing around with this, the, the more it goes into next year, you know?
We're well aware of that, we're well aware.
Well aware of that.
Well, okay, what do we have available for funding right now?
We're okay to go with-
To go with the office space, is what I'm saying.
We have, you know, two hundred, we have, um, uh, let me think here, we basically have two hundred thousand dollars for the office, uh, meeting space build-out and we have about eighty thousand dollars to put in the bathrooms.
Okay, so, we can, as soon as we get some type of plan available to us, we can-
Put it out to bid.
Put it out to bid and get somebody in here to start building out these, because I mean-
So I think I-
It's only, well, let's see, what do we got, probably three months, four months, actually, figure four months before we're gonna have dual people working here. Okay, we're gonna have two more people instead of Louise.
Right.
Unless some miracle happens and somebody runs, does the same thing as Louise did and runs for both positions for-
That's not gonna happen.
You know, but, well, I'm just saying, but anyways, so we have to, we have to get going on, on at least that.
Yeah, I mean, the original schedule outlined by the architect was, you know, to, to, you know, have these projects really put out to bid in April.
April, wait till, we should have it out in February.
Hmm, that's probably not gonna happen, I mean, it takes, takes a while, it takes a while to prepare the bid documents. So, um, we'll, 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 we'll see how that goes, but, you know, it, it's not gonna happen, um, and I, I, you know, I've talked to Louise about it, she's well aware of it, I told her it's not gonna happen by the time uh, she leaves, so we're, we're gonna have to make temporary arrangements and we've been talking about how we're gonna do that.
Alright, well, keep working on it, so.
Okay, well, what's, when, when can we circle back to close on the scope and cost that we're gonna go forward with for-
This will, this will be on the agenda from here on in, until it's done.
Well, I mean, we could get a better handle on it if we, again, if we could get bids out and find out what exactly it's gonna cost to do the, the offices and the bathroom, and if we'll have money left over, instead of just going to Town Hall, I mean, to Town Meeting and saying this is what we need, but we really don't know what we need, I'd, I'd rather have a pretty good figure that we can give to townspeople, whether they vote for it or not, but I'd rather have the truth right up front.
We'll, we'll have that, you know, well before Town Meeting, well before Town Meeting.
Does it still stop us, Paul, once we get this plan done, does it stop us from hiring a contractor to work for the town of Hatfield for a year or two years?
Well, we've talked about that, but, you know, you're limited to, uh, projects of under ten thousand dollars.
What I'm saying is-
This is more like, more like ongoing maintenance sort of stuff. We're, we're dealing with uh, public construction laws here and they're very, they're very well-defined and they've been around for a long time. Moving on to the Town Hall Garage renovations, I have a updated, um, I have updated cost estimates here for different scenarios that I received from Mark Gelot, the architect on this project over the weekend. I had him break it down into, uh, you know, three different scenarios, uh, going from left to right. The first column is, is the complete project with the connector, uh, connecting the two buildings. That comes in at slightly over half a million dollars. Uh, without the connector, uh, it comes in at four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And if we were to only do just the police offices, it's two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. We currently have approximately three hundred and ten thousand dollars, uh, in construction costs. Now, the big difference, well, one of the big differences with the, with connector and without connector scenarios is the fact that if we connect those two buildings, uh, it, it's considered one building under the code, and that, that bumps up the total square footage to over seventy-five hundred square feet. And due to the fact that, that we're actually, this is a change of use and the scope of the project, it means that we will absolutely have to, we will be required to put in a sprinkler system. Yeah, to the tune of approximately fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, what, over here, Paul, he's got finishes, specialties and equipment, what, what's that?
Well, I've, if, I've, you know, this is just the summary, this is just the summary, um, I'd have to go back and-
But if that's, if that's furnishings, that, that doesn't belong in a bid.
No furnishings, no furnishings, no furnishings.
Whoa.
No, we told, we told them that, uh, we're just gonna move whatever office equipment we have existing into that building and, you know, purchase whatever else we need, you know, outside of this.
Do I re, do I, did I hear you correct saying that we have three hundred and ten thousand that we could apply to the four twenty-six one hundred?
Correct.
Okay, so then we could deal with the other one hundred sixteen, one, with free cash.
So, I guess, you know, at this, at this, at this stage of the game, you know, the, these are the numbers, um, both the architect and the engineer came up with separate, uh, cost estimates, um, for the whole, the whole project, the, um, the engineer didn't break it down, as I had asked Mark too, and they, they basically came up with a half a million dollars, both of them, to, you know, do that complete project with, with the connector.
Can we get this thing out to bid to see what the bids come in at?
Well, we, we, we can't put it out to bid till we have bid documents. They have to be prepared, they're very detailed, it takes a long time to put together.
Well, we, we, this whole initiative began in part, in large part, not only to replace the, the storage for, for vehicle, garage for vehicles, but to provide a, a common area for all our emergency services. And, uh, I, I, I think that's an excellent idea, given where they're located now and the difference that could make in, in being located over there, we provide, we have a plan that covers that down and uh, I would move that the board move forward with the, without connector at the four twenty-six one, of which we have three ton, we can then go forward in the capital plan for the remaining one sixteen nine, and be able to finish it off. And then we got those folks out of here and bedded down and co-located in proper space with meeting rooms, conference rooms, emergency operations center, uh, could be set up there. I think it'd be a, a good, a good move for the town, a good move for our emergency services center.
Larry, can you come up here?
No, I just have a question, two, I have two quick questions. Number one, is this in addition to everything that's already been spent? Just because I'm not looking at what you guys are looking, because I don't have a copy of that. In addition to what's already been spent at the garage? And number two question is, follow-up, what, what's the grand total that we're already at? That we've spent on that garage over the last, what, two years, year and a half? What's our grand total already at? And is that, and are those bids in addition to that even?
Well, the answer to number one is yes, this is in addition to, um, I don't know what was spent on, I know it was covered through insurance money.
Originally, it wasn't a lot for you, though.
Yeah, well, the insurance paid for the new building.
And, and what you might, you might-
No, see, I, I, let's get the numbers right. We just said, you confirmed that we had three hundred and ten of what earlier was appropriated and, and available through insurance to apply to this.
Okay, cause the, the insurance didn't include, wasn't, wasn't nearly that.
Oh, no, no, it, it, the insurance was simply to provide the garage.
No, they just put up the shell and the garage and the installation, that's what they did.
So we've spent, so up to that point, you've already spent, you have three ten to allocate to that?
To allocate to the remainder, this, we have three ten to allocate against the four twenty-six.
And I, and I don't mean to be confusing, I'm just very confused when you're not, cause you guys have things that, you know, I know you're looking at sheets that I'm not looking at. I guess what I'm looking for is, is with these improvements that we're, that we're continually doing, and I've sat in a few of these meetings and it seems like it's, there's something new every time, really, because I know some things have been changed, what exactly is the final budget number gonna be cumulative from the time that building started being rebuilt until we're finally gonna be done? I mean, are we, we're not talking about two or three hundred thousand dollars, I mean, we're talking about eight, nine?
No, no, no.
No. You're talking about four hundred and twenty, twenty-six thousand.
Four hundred and twenty-six thousand.
So that, so that's in, what's, what's in it right now, I guess, is what you're saying?
You got three hundred thousand into it right now.
Okay, and you're talking about another, maybe five?
Another four hundred thousand into it.
A hundred thousand, another hundred and sixteen thousand.
Okay.
The delta, the remaining is a hundred and sixteen thousand.
We could, we currently have three hundred thousand dollars that was voted at Town Meeting for this project. None of that has been spent yet. That will, that will be spent-
Toward this.
Towards this.
Okay.
It's not a, this is not an addition to.
Yeah, we ba, we ba-
Hold on, my first question, I'm sorry that you misunderstood, that's, that's what I thought you were saying, was this is in addition to what was already spent.
No, 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 no.
Okay, that's what I was asking, that's what you said to me.
Okay, okay.
There's a copy, Larry, of that, here, Jeff, I think I passed it on.
Yeah. So I think that is a, that there's a motion on the table?
Yeah.
I'll second that to go without the connector because you're looking at seventy-five thousand dollars and then a sprinkler system and the whole bit just makes sense to move forward without it and maybe some future day we can make provisions for it.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded for the four hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred.
For the without connector.
Without connector. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Great, see, we're making progress.
Yeah, not yet, they haven't seen any hundred now, three hundred now, say we're making progress.
I haven't seen any walls up yet, so.
Okay, um, next, I, I wanna talk about Center School a little bit, we have submitted a, a grant application, um, well, actually it's a pre-grant application, uh, which was approved, uh, to the state and the state, you know, wrote back saying, yes, we approve that you may submit a grant application for this project, so, we will be submitting that grant application with the help of Pioneer Valley Planning Commission within the next couple of months or so. We, as part of the process in applying, we'll have to hold a public hearing. And we will need to, um, update our community development strategy, which I've made copies for you all, put in your packet. This was, this was put together a few years ago, um, when Pioneer Valley was working with the, the board and the redevelopment authority, this needs to be updated, probably doesn't, probably just needs to be tweaked a little bit, so I would just ask you to take a look at it and see, you know, if you have any thoughts on, you know, how this should be modified at this stage of the game. So I think we're probably looking at a, we're probably looking at holding that public hearing, um, you know, probably late February sometime, we'll have to coordinate that with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, but just take a look at it and get back to me with, you know, any suggestions. Next, um, we've been discussing the whole ambulance department situation, um, you know, I was approached by, uh, the town administrator in Sunderland about whether or not we'd be interested in joining their initiative for, you know, regional ambulance service, you know, we've talked about it, looked into it, um, and I, and I know there was a, a decision made that, no, we weren't interested, then some new information came to light and so there's been discussion about it, I guess, you know, where does the board stand with this, at this stage of the game?
Well, we had a little discussion and basically what we're doing and, and I'll reach out to the community right now to see if we can get people interested in becoming EMTs for the town. Um, I think we'd be willing to pay for their training. It is an extensive training, I went through it a number, a number of years ago, back when I lived in Whatelyet and, uh, it's an ongoing training, but, um, it, it's something that you really have to be interested in, but I, I would like to see some, some people come forward from town and, you know, if they're, if they're interested to get ahold of either Paul or Greg Gagnon, he's the, uh, in charge of the ambulance, or even Chief Beldon, and just tell them that you have interest and we can get your names down and see when we can come up with some type of training. So, that's one of our things that we've come up with.
That happened at our finance, well, we discussed a little bit at the finance committee with Greg and, uh, and that's what we did, we'd commit to make sure he puts money in his budget so we'd have the money for training, okay? And the biggest thing is to getting, getting, uh, people from the community interested and, uh, younger, older, whatever, whoever qualifies and, uh, and get the training to become an EMT and work with ambulance service. Anyone interested, please get in touch with Greg Gagnon or, or Paul, your town administrator. Thank you.
What comment we, again, as the chair mentioned, we, we did talk about this in our meeting with the, the finance committee, going over budgets, but, uh, we have an ambulance department in town, it's functioning, the critical issue is additional staffing, but when you look at the current arrangements we have and the cost and the capability we put together, not only with the organic capability of our in-house activity, but through contractual arrangements with other ambulance services, other communities, we're properly serving, servicing the town with the right skills, with the right response time, at a very reasonable cost, so, I, I would suggest that we not go forward right at this time pursuing alignment with Whatelye, South Deerfield and Sunderland in this initiative. I think they, they're building their package in a way that should we choose at a later time to revisit that decision, we, we'd be welcome, help them spread their capital costs and partic, and operating costs.
Is that a motion, Jeff?
Alright, I'll, I'll, I'll move that we, at this time, not participate further with the initiative among Sunderland, Whatelye and South Deerfield to regionalize ambulance services.
I'll second that motion for discussion.
Okay, motion seconded for discussion.
Just to add a little bit, what I'd like to do is get us to talk to Greg and maybe have an open house on the ambulance service, on what's provided and how it's all put together and, and what we have and, and maybe we'll get interested people that would come down and take a look at it, look at what our ambulance service does, look at what we have available, um, how things are done and so on and we might be able to, you know, get some people interested in it. So if, maybe get a letter off or, or get a notice off to Greg, yearly, yearly days on Jeff, so, that would be something that we might wanna do. But- There you go, you can do that.
Yeah, there's a, so we're gonna have a vote.
Okay, motion made, seconded.
Okay.
Alright.
All in favor, aye.
Thank you. You'll let them know- You'll let them know, Paul, right?
Yep, 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 will do. Yeah, the last thing I have is on the HCTV station manager, I just wanted to let you know that I put an ad in the Gazette over the weekend, and the deadline for applications will be at the end of the month, so we're moving ahead on that.
Okay, I thought you had...
I thought we had already done it.
I thought we had one out, and it was open until filled, so, okay.
No.
All right.
No, we were waiting for our final blessing from Comcast with her...
Well, that was taking a long time, you know, that took a long time, and I, and, you know, we finally got the contract back, and just taken me a little time to have this rise to the, near the top of the priority list.
Are we acting on this abatement?
Yeah, that, that is just December.
Which month?
Just December.
Just December?
Yes.
I'd move that the, move, we approve an abatement of $773.81 for the month of December.
I'll second that motion. Um, I just want to let everybody know that, um, what that is, is the adjustments come in for the ambulance, and when we get money from, from the, let me see, what shall we call it, the elderly...
Insurance.
Insurances and stuff like that. They don't pay the whole 100% of the bill, so we have to readjust it back down, so that's what the adjustment is.
And for Medicare, we're by law not allowed to pursue traditional...
Okay, motion's been made, seconded for $773.81, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Old business. What do we have? Anything?
I've got lots.
I figured.
What does that mean? Uh, we've got, we need to do some schedule work. We've, you know, Ed's gonna be gone here for a month, but we've got a bunch of issues to follow up on from the budget discussion we had with the finance committee, and we've got another one coming up next Monday night. We need to set some time to kind of resolve these issues about the COLA. Are we doing stipend increases or not? There's a variety of things we just need to close on.
Now, can, can we actually, well, I guess we could say we, about, you know, what we can maybe offer for COLA, but when are, when are we gonna be, have, have some final figures as to what we're gonna have?
Usually when the cherry, when we're close to the cherry sheet, no, it's what...
I mean, it's, it's typically, you know, well, the governor hasn't even filed his budget.
Right.
And that's typically, you know, the end of January. Um, so that gives you something to hang your hat on, but it's typically not till the House passes their budget that you really start to get a handle on...
Usually it's smart.
What, what state aid is gonna look like. Um, but the final numbers are, are, uh, and then the Senate passes their budget, you know, a month later. So, it's, it's late into the spring before we really know. And sometimes we don't know until, you know, after the first of the, after July 1. So, well, once the governor files his budget, then we'll, we'll have, we'll have something. But, you know, the other big numbers that are hanging out there still are, um, okay, what's, what's the health insurance rate gonna look like? Um, you know...
Flat, even.
Oh, is that what they're saying?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We'll, we'll get a, at the conference this weekend, we'll get a little heads up because the governor's gonna speak there, so we'll know.
He is?
Yeah.
I didn't see him on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, anyway, we have a kind of variety of issues. The COLA stipends, Board of Health, whether they pursue in-house versus professional, hiring some professional service activity. Uh, there's some issues raised about the validity of the classification management study, and do we, are we prepared to revisit that? There's a whole variety of things we need to circle back on. Kokot, follow-up.
Yeah.
We met, just, just for folks, we, we had an opportunity at Representative Kokot's initiative to meet with us, he along with Representative from Senator Rosenberg's office, Mary Jane Bacon, and we reviewed a number of areas where, you know, he might help us in terms of securing grants, but there's, we had, you know, a number of things that came up there that we need to follow up on. The Mass Works, have we ever scheduled the Mass Works debrief? We need that. He's talking about having us meet with Allen Blair of CDC. Talking about potential additional funding for the town hall from, you know, block grant. I mean, there's a variety of things we need to follow up on.
A lot of this hinges also, Jeff, on how much money we're gonna have, free cash and what's after the budget.
I understand.
So, there's not a whole heck, I mean, you can be prepared for it, but, um, those decisions are gonna come in March and pretty close to April, when we know where the budget stands, and then if anything's gonna be set out for articles or, or whatever the case may be there. For the financial picture, I know one thing for sure, I'm not, I'm not looking to put anything on for extra money on the budget, I mean, out, out to the public.
On what?
Uh, extra taxes and stuff like that, because everything we put out there is gonna be debt exclusion or something like that.
Yeah, that's right.
So, sometimes you're gonna have to make do with what you have right in house, so you're gonna have to pick and choose your projects.
Well, that's up to us to do.
Yeah, exactly.
It's our job.
Yeah.
As we do every year.
Mm-hmm.
That's, I've got a variety of other things. That's all right.
The Kokot, he wanted to meet with us like towards the end of February, right, with, you know, Mass Works and also, who was it, from TVC?
Uh, Tim Brennan, but, uh, the key, the key one is, for us, is Mass Works. I thought that he was gonna set that meeting.
That's what I thought, he was gonna try to get that together. So, I mean, we can have Paul just touch base with him.
We should have Paul follow up then, if in fact he's, I, I wouldn't expect his office to have to set that up, but, or at least we need to coordinate that and make sure that's what's gonna happen. That's all I have.
That's it?
Yeah.
All right. Any new business?
I, I just wanna, I'm not against anything you're saying, Jeff, I'm just saying we've gotta look at the whole, the whole thing.
Against what?
I don't wanna get into a, a situation where we're gonna have to put a lot of money on, on the table for, you know, the people to vote on and stuff, because that won't happen. So, that's why if we can get it out of our, with what money we've got coming in from the cherry sheet, plus what we have for free cash, maybe we can make things work to our advantage. That's what I'm saying.
Does anybody have anything for new business?
Um, there's something in our package.
See, you're gonna be gone for a month, is there anything you want to bring up that we...
I'd like to try the remote participation one time. What time does that catch you up in the morning?
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, going by Skype or something like that, but you're not set up. I mean, that would be interesting. I mean, I could do it with my phone and your phone, something like that. See how it works. Have to try it out ahead of time first.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, in the package here, there was something...
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Oh, Larry's not here. I'm gonna catch him when he was here. Find out why this was removed from the, from our website. John, maybe you know?
No.
Uh, we're talking about the assessors' property record cards.
I'll go see if I can find it. You can keep chatting, Chad.
Got this letter?
Yep.
Chris?
Yep.
I mean, and I understand what the situation is. All this stuff should be on there from the previous years, and for some reason it was dumped off of it. And I'd just like to know why, too, because, you know, you use it for comparables, when you, when you try to look and see what, what your property is worth against other people that you feel are comparable. It's benefit to, to everybody, and I don't know why it's taken off.
While we're waiting for Larry to come back, if he, if he can. There was also a letter here from the Agricultural Commission, and...
Yep.
Have you, have you all read that?
Yes.
I would move to have DPW and the Cemetery Commissioner review this request, identify and mark the plot, and the BOS allocate on a temporary basis the plot for Farm Garden Program under the direction of the Hetfield Agricultural Advisory Commission and the Hetfield School Committee. And I'd further move to have the town administrator amend the annual lease announcement, removing this parcel from that lease.
Um, would we, would we want to remove, well, I'll second that for discussion.
Okay.
Would we want, would we want to remove the whole parcel?
No, 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 the parcel that they're going to designate for the school garden.
Oh, okay.
Right now, we're renting out that whole section of land.
Yeah, so we just want to carve out a little bit just for that, and they can, they can put the rest out.
Exactly. Carve out that parcel for the school garden, and then you could rent out the rest, but right now...
If that's the case, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, that was the motion?
Yes.
You seconded?
Okay, I'll, yeah, I second that.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then tell you the list of things to do.
I didn't see the letter, but I was in contact with Jen over at the school about it. She had called me in regards to some compost bins that, this is where this is going. They're looking to start a little community garden for the school.
All right.
Larry's got it.
Yep. Uh, Larry, we received a letter from Chris Smith. It's about, uh, let's see, removing?
Did you see this at all, Larry? You're...
Pass it on.
Oh, yeah, I just, I was just reading it upstairs.
All right, are we gonna put that back on, because it is valuable for the people?
It's not, he shouldn't, he should have access.
Okay, so it's just a...
Jenny said it's not, we haven't, we haven't removed it.
So, something's going on up there?
It may have been a blip somewhere, but Jenny got on and she went right into it, no problem, so don't worry.
So, it is there, just...
It's there, and we did, we did not vote to remove it. We haven't done anything like that, so...
Okay, that's great, thank you.
No problem.
Because it is valuable with that. Thank you for coming back.
If there's an issue, well, she's gonna look into it right now to find out if there's an issue somewhere else.
Just make sure...
We'll go to another computer, but she, she had no problem getting in there, and she said everything that she was looking at. Everybody should have access.
Good.
And, and the website is up on those cards on the Main Street GIS, on the cards on her desk.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Is there anything else?
That's a personal thing at the end here. Are we done?
I am done, yep.
I just, I've been asked by a number of folks, and I just want to say, I do plan to run for reelection this coming May for the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. I'll have to hear.
This'll be third time around?
I'll never catch up with you. But the third time's the charm, Jeff.
It's, it's interesting, it's very interesting. You know, I just, I, I think just a little bit, you know, the way it works, I mean, you're not only involved in, in this part, you're also involved in the Pioneer Valley Planning Council, which is really helpful to the town and stuff like that, and that's a big help. Um, you know, I, I know what it's like, you know, to go outside of town and get the extra, you know, when things are happening, you know, when the money's out there, and it's no different than what I have with the Board of Health and, and the, working with the state and the county and stuff, and, and it's, it's a valuable tool to have, so that's a plus.
All right. Anything else? Did you have a little session afterwards?
Yeah.
Would you like to do an executive session for a few minutes?
Yeah, we could, we could do that.
Executive session or just administrative? We need some sort of schedule.
Just administrative stuff.
All right, I guess we can do it.
Dad's gonna be gone.
Administratives, yeah. All right. Yeah, why don't we do that then? All right, well, I guess that'll conclude this meeting as far as...
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See you next, in about two weeks.